All right.
Where?
All right. I'd like to call School District of North Fallac, school board meeting to order Monday, January 26, 2015, 7:02 in the district meeting. Next item on the agenda is roll call.
Mr. Duffey.
Here. Will the option? Here.
Next item is report on public notice, Mr. Stedall.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy. Public notices and agendas were mailed to the Fallac in order to radio station KFIZ, KFIZ 107, WFDL radio, and agendas were posted at the district office, US Bank and Municipal Building on Thursday, January 22, 2015.
Next item, please stand up for pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united at, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes. Do any board members have any changes to note? Seeing none, we will approve the minutes as presented. Next item on the agenda is a treasure report. It's Mr. Duffey. Let me get it for Mr. Duffey.
All right. Cash balance on hand here is January 26, 2015, $1,396,718.41. I'll make a motion to recommend payment for bill shown in the attached list dated January 26, 2015, with the amount of $610,193.14.
Okay, I'll second that. Discussion, questions from board? All right. Seeing no questions, roll call.
Duffey?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Next item on the agenda is the court report.
Not for the court report, but for donation. This one, yeah, the Fallac Association of Congress, $50 donation to the Art Club. Jerry Deanna Schaefer, $100 for the Block Cafe. Nick and Mary Soller, $50 for the Block Cafe. And the credit unit, $1,200 for the Block Cafe.
Moving on, student council report.
We're the day off.
Probably will remind.
Although, Mr. Duffey, do you have anything that you'd like to add about Mr. Balling?
I'm sure they're just, we're having a winter ball, February 7th. Student Council is trying to, the original plan was to look at it as more of a freshman sophomore dance, and then after discussion, you know, their goal really is to, for two, you know, to have another event for students and to do a fundraiser. So, we talked about it, and they are still going to have some sort of recognition for a king or queen, but it's going to be not just freshmen and sophomores, it's going to be optional to encourage all freshmen or seniors to attend, and they're trying something new, so I give them credit. They want to basically try and have, have it to be just a surprise, a luck of the draw, and so you, if you come to winter ball and you choose to put your name in either the guy or the girl bucket, your name's going to get drawn. So, that is what they're going to do, and just, you know, have a fun night, so. And then they're planning for their, our spring, which will come hopefully soon, friendship event where we, we have family nights coming up, so they're looking at that, and if I'm forgetting something else, I'll make sure that we email it to you.
Are they selling tickets already? They selling tickets for the dances that?
They have not. No, I believe this week they're going to start doing that. We've done the guest forms already, so I've done that, but I haven't seen ticket sales at lunch yet.
Yes. We're talking about the water. All right. Next, the item on the agenda is citizens input. I will open up the citizens input at 7:08. Any citizen wishing to be heard? Citizen wishing to be heard? Final time, any citizen wishing to be heard? Seeing none, close, citizens input at 7:09. Moving on, Mr. Stedall, superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy. What I would ask is, we have some information, quite a bit of information to go through and look at, and also share with the board convention that Steve and Ryan and Pete, Dave and Marie and myself attended this past, this past week, but we also have a guest here, and that's Mike Clark from Barrett, as you can notice, as you noticed, there was a larger draft that was sent to you. Marie just got the final one with the final numbers, so that was also sent to you as attachment earlier. And we have Mike Clark reported to have him here. He's one who is our representative from Barrett, and what he'll do is go through two things, and if this is okay, if this is good with the board, not only go through and do a presentation about kind of our financial history, looking at our debt, our obligations of debt, kind of the amortization and different information about that, but then also, in the new business, discussing, considering the resolution that would allow us to reissue these bonds. In essence, it's a refinance for the next three years, decide to save some good money because of our rating and because of the market. So, what I would ask is that we begin with Mike, and kind of have it be kind of a hybrid, where not only will he give information, but then, in essence, to get him so he can move on his way, then to allow us to go into the first new business and deal with that, then go back to superintendent's attachment.
Mr. Duffey, have you any comments to that?
So, we're going to discuss this, and then we'll go over to the fourth one.
Yeah, and then go back across all facilities and the board convention.
We can do that.
All right.
We took bids this morning on the district's issue that's callable, the spring, and we've got very good results. I think some results may have been shared with you, those were preliminary. If I open up to page two, we took bids this morning on $2.9 million, a bit of an obligation refunding bonds. We received 10 bids. UMB Bank was the low bidder, with a true interest cost of 0.8867%. And again, 10 bids is outstanding, it's a relatively small issue, relatively short issue, and what we're finding is there's a lot of interest on the short end, people don't want to commit too long, and the rates are a little higher. When there's interest on the long end, people are desperate for every yield they can get. So, this is that, the base. Turning to page three, again, is the refunding bonds. You see the amount, the final amount is 2.875 million, and that's what should be read in terms of the resolution. The reason the amount changes is we go up with an estimated amount, and we don't know how much, what the interest cost is going to be, we don't know how much premium bidder may build into it, meaning they're giving you more than face value, and all you need is the amount to pay off to resist that, and all costs associated with refinancing. So, we only need the 2.75 million. Settlement date is February 17th, so one, the district, we'll put the district to get the money wired to the right locations. We'll also, during that time period, if actually once the board, if the board approves a resolution, we'll set out the call notice notifying the bond holders of your existing debt, those bonds you recall on April 1st. Your interest payments, principal payments will stay in the same cycle, by April, October time scheduled to separate annual payments. This issue will be non-callable, we only have a few more years to go, given the interest rates, and even the size, you pay smaller, it can become more difficult. Again, the final true interest cost is 0.8664%. Again, the original issue, the only financing was refinancing that we gave back in 2005. Going to page four, any questions so far? Sure. Oh, sure. Yeah, that just describes the existing issue, and we'll talk about the savings. We won't list several places. That's okay. It was a May 1st, 2005 issue, if you saw it, interest rate graph, I've been with Barrett 15 years, and rates have been lower lower during that time period, and so the district took advantage of doing an advanced refunding at that time, and the IRS only allows one of those to take place, rates have been low since then, but this call features the first opportunity you've had to refinance here. Maturity will stay 16 to 18, again, relatively short. Total savings, $134,000. PD savings, $129,000, meaning if you had all the savings today, those would be equivalent to when you discount by the interest rate of the debt issue question. Historically, that's a calculation that's always been used, I myself don't find that meaningful. When you issue the debt, you don't referend, you don't describe it on the cost on the PD basis, but they like to show the savings. Savings percentage, 4.46%, good savings percentage, typically when you get to 2% is when you start considering it, so we're all about that. Going to page four, looking at, starting at the left-hand side, the maturities, 16, 17, 18 maturities in the yellow box, the 930, 965, and 1 million, those are the maturities we're refinancing, the callable, April 1st. So, replacing those issues with issues, quote to the right, 100 to 2.875 million, the 945, the 916, and the annual savings on the far right-hand box, yellow box, the $29,000 at the top, that's not savings, that's something you levied for last fall, you are taxed for it, so we use those funds to balanceize the issue, pay off some of the issue, so it's really the savings, the 44, the 42, and 42 are the savings we're providing, we're taxed for those other dollars. Again, then you'll see the savings percentages, the numbers, as we discussed on the last page, the 134, and then again, this is all net, taxpayer, this is referend approved, that the savings can only be used for taxpayer, taking a stand on the reality of the purpose. So, even despite being a fairly small, short issue, very pleased with the number of bidders and the interest rate, I was looking earlier today, a couple of years ago, on some of the short-term cash flow borrowings, which I know you don't do, but they're cash flow borrowings for 11-month periods of time, 4.75%, so you get a figure of the tick of 2.87%. The last couple pages, is the Moody's report, the district's A1 was affirmed, again, which is a very good rating. The district has very strong finances, I don't want to go into some detail, very strong reserves, good management, proximity to, you know, Fallac, all those things going forward, you're a very, you're a small district, and then you've also had some draws, which I know the board's aware, in terms of the less years under reserves, which, you know, something, you know, that does impact ratings. They're like, like a bank, they love you both, lots of money, big reserves, so, but again, the A1 is still a very strong rating. There are more districts in the state who are not rated at all, so still good rating, and rating is important when you're issuing debt, and I think it is a reflection of the strength of the district, but I definitely tell people, bond rating should run all the decisions you make when you're in this district, so the things you have. Very strong, A1 is very good. We have the report, and it speaks to some of those strengths. So, without my comments on the bond issue.
And what I would suggest then, if we have any questions on this, otherwise, probably be forced to, this is a little fresh, or maybe gold, and entertain, consider adopting this with adjusted numbers that we put in the minutes for the reissue of some of the assets, the refinancing of this, and one of the things that might just said that resonates with me well, too, is that this is debt that goes directly to savings to the taxpayers, because we can't, this isn't, oh, now we have $44,000 that we can now levy within there, this is correct about the referend, so I think it's, that it's an excellent thing, and a penny saved is a penny earned in the long scheme of things, and going through this process, we haven't been rated in a few years, right?
The last issues the district, we did with the district were the USCBs, which were not rated, so 2005 was really the last time we went through this process, and it is a good process to go through, to kind of get, you know, a third party, now they're looking at it very specific, the ability of the district to repay bondholders, but it still gives you an idea of some of the strengths and weaknesses, and again, there's a lot of strengths, the district's doing a lot of positive things, using our forecast model, rating agencies like that, multiple, you know, districts live in multiple years, you're personally making decisions in isolation. So, it was a good exercise to go through, you know, we were hopeful for a little bit higher rating, but again, I think, you know, some of the spent, you know, spend dollars in reserves, even though you're very strong, and you're very strong, still, there's a little trouble to them, and then obviously the uncertainty of safety, probably is kind of a question mark.
Another, another strong thing is our whole debt, but did it go down? We just got our last report, I mean, reviewing, and we'll bring that to the board, and it's been a month or so, but we-
I want, I want to review with Linda before I bring any numbers, but it's gone down, our obligation is not down substantially, so.
What drove to look at this, to refinance? Obviously, it's great that we did, we looked at it, what, got Maria or Mayor or someone to say, boy, we should really refinance some of our money.
I think what it is, is telling what our advisor's saying, when there's a good opportunity that takes care of that.
Well, we looked at it-
We've been talking quite, for quite some time now, knowing that our debt is going to drop off, and just in those conversations and strategically planning, Mike said, hey, you know, this debt is callable, interest rates are great, let's just give it a shot, and we talked about, you know, going out for that rating call, and should we or shouldn't we, and we did, and it turned out to be a good decision.
This is something we've been monitoring, again, April 1st is your call date, so, you know, the fact that rates are extremely low right now is a bit unfortunate, but, you know, we had this conversation probably 18 months ago, about this is something that's going to be coming up. You know, when you first started, you went over what the debt situation was, and the district is very low, and just another one of your strengths. And so, we knew this was coming up, and it's amazing how quickly they come up sometimes, and they go out, you know, a year ago, we had a discussion, or even the summer, we may be talking about it, and saying this is something we've got to keep in mind, and we'll have to focus on, and so it's, it's something that even districts doing non-encourager advanced refunding is, again, these rates are so low, even though the, back when you did this issue in 2005, the advanced refunding dollars should deposit into an escrow account, or interest in an escrow account, and then the escrow account pays off the debt when it becomes callable. Back in 2005, the escrows were very efficient, had pretty good earnings on, we should be limited government securities, well, anyway, you live by fixed income, investors know where the same thing has been since 2008, and they're very inefficient, and rates are so low, you have the bond side, so, that was just something that, you know, we monitored, and we'll bear up, and we're fortunate in terms of the interest rate market when we go.
The non-callable, that means that they can't be paid off ahead of time, or is that different?
You can't, these bonds, the people that bought these bonds, or whoever owns them, will have these bonds until they mature. If the district does find itself in a situation where you want to pre-fund debt, you can do that through defees, and so basically deposit money into escrow, and then the escrow makes that issue payment, but these bond payments will be made one way or the other. And just given the low interest rate market, and the small, relatively small issue, and short timeframe, and the non-callables typically anything under five years maturity, unless you have a known situation where maybe you have a TIF closing, and you can reasonably project that you're going to get some money, you may want to be able to call the rates and then off, but in this market, if you put a call provision, you would definitely lost your savings, but you can pre-fund, that option never goes away.
Can you pre-fund with other forum? New bonds that would put aside, maybe?
No. Well, the only, the only way that would make some sense is if you could get an interest rate lower than these, and then the cost associated with going through that, that process. Again, and do it again, we'd have to be using taxable, that being versus the taxes, it's taxed now, so, I'm not saying that there's not a scenario out there, but it's high. But again, this is the second time the original referend approved issue has been refinanced, so you maximize what the IRS wants, which is refinancing.
And that is what keeps the interest rate lower, correct, that if there's a metcall, feature on?
Absolutely. Whenever you start adding options to your benefit, it's, you know, has an adverse effect on, on buyers now. And again, given this interest rate market, where you're looking at rates that's low, and likely, but historically, you just don't see a window that, you know, maybe would, maybe you make that last insured callable, but how much you're giving up in terms of savings for an option, that's highly unlikely, because you couldn't extend it. That debt, this debt, originally that would've been 15 years, and you still had the ability to stretch that out, then maybe that was a hell of a beast to have a call feature, but you can't extend it, and to move payments earlier, you know, put a higher taxing over the next couple of years to have some people that's more aware, so, I think the district's not very well.
Is there any benefit to not doing this? I mean, I see we're saving money, I mean, saving a lot of interest, but is there any feature, maybe if Mike not doing this, there would be benefits, or, I mean, it seems like a no-brainer, to me, but we're saving money, does that have weight or?
Right, and to wait, once you start getting past April 1st, you're limiting your savings opportunity, because then, those days, those days starting April 1st, the days you're holding a higher debt, is it one last day you have potential for interest, and the longer that goes, the more unlikely it gets to be that you give refinancing or savings. Would you feel rates are going to move higher? You probably hear that, that at the end of this year, the Fed's going to start, well, they're going to start, will be adjusting some of the shorter-term rates, and since this is a shorter-term instrument, it may be a little bit different, if you're looking at a 10-year, 15-year loan, but those adjustments could impact you a little bit more, and so we think now, so we're fortunate with the interest rates, but we took full advantage of this.
I think that's just a good example of these decisions, I mean, with the forecasting model, we're, we're waiting to see what the new budget's going to be, because we're already looking two, three years out, so that we can be pragmatic and do everything we can with the resources we have for our kids, and as Mike had said before, the bond rating and saving the money is a very big, important thing, but there's so many other variables that look at how it can impact a student's achievement, growth every day, so, but it's one of those things that hopefully, hopefully we'll continue to see if there's different options or ideas out there that can continue to help us save money. One thing, everything always changes.
Okay, Steve, I'll leave you, Washington. Two resolution awarding sale of $2 million East, $175,000 general obligation refunding bonds. Any further questions? Seeing none, go on.
Duffy?
Yes.
Duffey?
Yes.
Yes.
Some are related, then, I don't know if you want to start?
Sure. Mike right now is going to go in a little bit more into detail, he'd ask some questions about our referendum, the debt falling off, why are we doing this, what does this mean, and also, he had talked about how this impacts, there's, there's really two types of levy, well, three, if you would get funding, but, there's two main types of levies that we do locally, and one is to fund, to fund our revenue caps, that's what the fund, that's what we can, what we can utilize, help with education for students in our district. The other is the referendum, or the debt levy. What's going to happen in our district is that debt levy is going to be pending in three years, and what that is, is that our, the revenue caps, what we get as far as how much per student that we can raise, and we all know that, with the revenue caps, it's, let's say, $10,000, if 70% comes from the state, we can raise $30,000, or $3,000, you know, 60% comes from the state, we can raise more locally. We saw a slight reduction in some of the municipalities, and here from a tax reduction, and a lot of that came from the decision of the state government to take and fund all of the technical schools through the general fund instead of through property taxes. So, that's, the thing is, when we look at what we spend for pupil, part of that is a referendum, and that's that debt that we utilize, spread things over time to allow us to do capital projects, to, and you might have heard some districts utilize referendum debt for operations, some are reoccurring, some are not, but it's something that allows us, just like when we look at purchasing a home, just like when we look at maybe buying a vehicle personally, it allows us to have that, that ability to provide for students now, and allow for that cost to be shared over generations, if you will, 10, 15 years, and get that value. So, what Mike's going to do right now is just going to talk about the next three years and what's going on, and then what does that mean then for our district three years from now? And there is no coincidence here that we knew, and we do know, that this referendum debt means that there could be common opportunity for some resources available for us to have limited, if any, impact locally, to take care of some of the capital projects that we have in the future, so, that's where that facilities, bray, that facilities, that initial facility study, we'll talk about that process later on, comes into consideration. Instead of doing what does our district need, knowing that, hey, you know what, money is money, and if you don't have the resources, why try to develop something, we knew something could possibly come available, so, we don't want to have a situation where we have all these needs, needs, and needs, and then it starts impacting students' learning and growth and the vitality of the district, when we can plan, know, develop information to see if, hey, if we do have a plan, and if it is a feasible plan developed by our community, and developed by the district, and we do have resources, what could that mean? So, that's the second part of it, that we, looking at what our resources will look like, and looking at how this referendum, the payoff of that referendum that was done with the high school remodeling, the middle school will look like. So, this is the part where Mike will discuss that a little bit, but by no means does this say, oh, within three years, you can make it that we're going to go and go to referendum and get money, but what it says is, as we move forward with our facility studies, and looking at what we're going to do, we do know we have needs. So, how are we going to look at those needs? Is there these needs that we can take care of now, spread them out over time, and really one of the best things is, is this is going to be a great opportunity to engage the community, to find out what plan do they have, work with the village, I mean, is there some things we can do together, where we can have facilities, and we can work on things and make things more efficient and effective for all of us? So, this is just that financial part that says, hey, this is what the next three looks, years look like, and this is what we can kind of see the future, and then the other part is, where are we as a facility, in a learning environment, what do we need for schools, and they kind of come together within the next three or four years.
Okay. If you open up to the first page, disclaimer saying that we're not necessarily recommending any action, again, this is just kind of identifying, discussing the opportunity that you do have coming up. Districts across the state have been looking at these opportunities of the, you know, the referendums from the mid-'90s or late-'90s, or probably the early '2000s in terms of, you know, 2020 was coming on, taxes were going down, you know, a lot of, you can call them Tommy Townes school buildings were built at that time, now that debt is starting, starting to follow up by the players who are embarrassed, this is, this is for Capleton, you know, for a high school, you know, that, that debt was, was coming to, to a close, and then Capleton just passed the referendum, giving the money flying, so. So something to be aware of and mind for, difficult to say what the environment will be when you reach that opportunity, but you have to kind of just get yourself ready. Looking at page three, managing the future debt drop. And again, it'll be over $2 on your tax rate. You don't know exactly what it is because your valuations will go up to as well over $2 at this point. You know, if your tax base grows, which would be great, that helps spread the costs of things, then in fact might be lower, but again, you don't know that. But it's going to be a significant drop. Your overall tax rate right now is, even with the debt we have in place, is below the state average. When this debt drops off, you'd be well below the state average in terms of your tax rate per thousand dollars valuation. You're not a high-spending district, you're not a high-debt district. So those are some of the things that Moody's likes, but maybe a little harder in terms of maybe the functioning and operating of school district. I guess it means, you're going to have some choices. You're going to have, you're not thinking of letting the debt fall. You know, the voters have fulfilled their commitment to pay the debt for the renovations that were done at that time, and your levy falls to, you know, the seventh versus being in the ninth. So that's, that's a good thing. I mean, to have the lower tax rates is beneficial. But use the opportunity to address some of the needs. Another referendum is probably the most common thing that districts look to. That can be for debt or it could be for operating. Again, you know, the debt is a little bit more limited in terms of what it can be used for, you know, capital needs, technology things. The operating is a little more program-focused, it may have some capital components to it. Technology especially on a recurring basis makes a lot of sense. Technology, school districts are very good about stretching life of technology, but on a recurring basis or an ongoing revenue stream for technology makes a lot of sense. Any ambition, scope of projects and needs look like, programming, can you imagine a program going to look like in about five, five years in terms of the technology side? There's also energy efficiency exemption, which some of it does not require referendum. It does give the district additional levy authority, so it does have an impact on taxpayers without going to referendum, but it's a little bit more limited in scope in terms of the type of projects you can do. You have to have a performance contract in place. And that exemption's currently available, but it will be in three years if not developed. It's something that's being widely used now to address projects. And again, once you kind of work through your process, and if, you know, the district chooses not to go to referendum, this would be an option, we have that drop to add some levy to address some needs. But again, a little bit more limited in scope in terms of the types of projects that has to generate energy efficiency or operational savings. So just doing, you know, resourcing a parking lot, you know, most likely is not qualifying. Roofing is a windows too, they're not the greatest because the HVAC on windows is so long. So again, a little bit, a little bit more limited. Or any combination of those. You could have a debt question, you could have an operating question. Typically, you don't, if you go to a referendum, you don't use the energy exemption, because if you're going to go to the voters and ask for additional support to do it, to get additional support without asking at the same time, because it's going to be a match-up very well. But I guess it's important to begin having those conversations in the district. District that owns, David Bray, who did a great job to work with them on my route on their last referendum. And, you know, at least have the information available to put your position, make a decision in the time period. Factors to consider, looking at the next page. School funding levels did change. I started working as a business manager before revenue limits, back in the meat hours on the negotiation side. This changed a lot. Revenue limits came into place, everybody said, you know, three, four, five years and we'll be gone. We're still hanging on, but where is state funding though? You know, the impact of voucher programs and the different things, how does that, how does that impact your district to help clarify what your needs are? Enrollment, the district's, is glitter moment, is good open enrollment, all those types of things. So what are the, what are the, what are the classrooms, how many classrooms you need, what are the classrooms you need to look like to accommodate at a moment? That is another consideration. Program needs, not an instructional guide, but, you know, the, the technology needs, the, those types of things, change what classrooms look like. So what is it going to look like to meet your core goals? And so is operating, is debt, what makes the most sense, if any? And then the facilities, just up people, the facilities. All these high schools and things that were built in the mid-'90s are now, well, there's wet water, water town, you know, roads are a very good place, and some design things weren't quite, they weren't quite as well as they had thought. So you're seeing district or schools and facilities that aren't really that old eventually need some care. It's funny, it was in Appleton, when North was being built, everybody called East the new high school. Now, once North broke ground, they realized that the new high school, East, was 30 years old and didn't have a girls locker room, didn't have a pool, didn't have a lot of things that the North was going to have. So we came back here, so I would call them, actually, our friend, asking about some of those things. But time goes very quickly. People drive by your buildings from the street, they look great, you know, they're not in the locker room, they're not, you know, looking at what must be needed by those types of things. So facility needs, it never seems to go away, and I was amazed how the cost of a project. Valuation and growth and tax base, I guess is another way to describe it in terms of what's the health of the community. I know a few years ago with Perkert Marine, that was, you know, an interesting time. I grew up in Janesville, that was the close of GM. Now it's gone. So used to that. So what's, what's the environment like and what does that mean for the future of the district in terms of maybe population, all those types of things? Any economies somewhat related to that in terms of, you know, is it an environment where going, asking for additional support makes sense for you to have literally to tell? Is that something you'll have to monitor more and further?
The one thing a variable too in this community, this area, Fondalac, Northfondalac, gosh, gosh, throughout the areas with Highway 23 in the next five years, going to be four lanes all the way from Fondalac to Boynton. That significantly changes travel and centralizing things. And then when you look at also, once 41 is officially an interstate, that's going to also cause or allow for different traveling and hauling, you know, regulations to happen on 41. So if our communities are working together and are thoughtful, I think there could be significant growth for the Fondalac gas, but that's to be seen with.
The next couple of pages, you know, one describes the types of referendums, and the other kind of gets into detailed energy exemption. The energy exemption is there just for information. I think it was way too early to even really evaluate that until Bray has an opportunity to study. But again, the two types of referendums, I think it's important that this is distinguished. Again, the debt is pretty self-explanatory, you're going to borrow for a certain period of time for certain projects. And at the revenue limit, there's two types, there's a non-recurring and a recurring. A non-recurring means there's a set end date to those dollars. You get the same amount for whatever number of years the voters, well, or you're asking them. The recurring means dollars are added to your revenue limit calculation forever. They fluctuate a little bit with your enrollment. Those don't pass as well. The non-recurring passes about 50% of the time, or the better recurring passes about 30% of the time. People just have reluctance to give the dollars forever. There's also danger with the recurring, thinking people, or voters thinking that the district's problems are solved forever, and we're giving this money forever, and that's not the case. But numerous districts have gone for recurring and gone back several years later for another operating question. So I guess the key thing, key takeaways are those to start kind of looking at this because 17, 18 is the last year that you would levy, four years is a voter-approved levy authority. So, you know, we've kind of backed up from there. You're probably, you know, sometime in late '16, early '17 is when, you know, you're evaluating all these factors we talked about, defining what the scope is, if anything. Again, we're not saying that you have to do anything or you will do anything, but really that late '16, early '17 is the timeframe where things have to be fairly well formulated because you're going to be to the voters late '16 or spring of '17. Because there's no fall election in odd years in '17, you can do a special election. But that, again, it seems, sounds like a long ways off, but it'll come up very quickly.
Mike, can you talk about the advantage to, because if we were to do anything, if you're pushing it back a little bit further to coordinate or to coordinate with the presidential election?
Presidential elections historically have been the best elections, we're almost down since election dates. It used to be, when I first started, oh, you know, I don't want to avoid those big turnout dates, but it really turns out not to be the case. And I think it helps the district in a couple of ways. One, if you look at smaller turnout dates, they don't do it as well, and I think part of that is because there is a certain segment of your voters who won't know, and they will opt to turn it over. But I think the bigger thing is, the district doesn't necessarily have to worry about the turnout, it can focus on the message. People are going to show up if it's a presidential election or larger numbers if they do. So if, if your job is just to inform and you don't have the glory or you don't spend energy making sure people actually vote, it gets a little bit easier. And to a certain degree, parents are some of, because they're busy, you know, they're running soccer practice, football practice, baseball practice, whatever, I guess November, basketball, football. So they need a little bit of connection. And that obviously is historically a big support group. So that is something, you know, but the most important thing to go with, if you're going it all. But, you know, when the project, the scope are well-defined, your position, you communicate well, the economics are good in terms of the environment. But that would be, you know, if you need to pick something, say that's what we're going to shoot for, or at least be ready to possibly make a decision, that's not a bad, bad target. That being said, that when you look at it November '16, you're making the decision in August of '16, your resolution has to be set more than 75, 70 days before the election. So now you start to talk August of '16, the calendar's gone a little smaller.
I have a question, just a clarification. We talked earlier about what the North, that devoted to maintain the tax levy? Is that something retiring? I just want to make sure.
Oh, yeah, yeah. So basically, what, what, the North, that was, was coming, coming to an end. So what the district did, looked at its needs, has some technology things, has some capital projects needs. So they looked for an amount, they kind of built out the flat.
So I'm looking at that, I mean, isn't it essence what you're doing? If you're looking at the schools and saying, let's just, if the board would consider that were a possibility, saying, let's just keep it at the nine versus the seven, we could, the board could do that?
No, no. But the voters are very typically fairly accepting of things staying like this. They love this.
Right.
Not crazy about this. But if you keep it like this, and the other component that the Appleton want is, they wanted to keep the debt side, they had other capital needs, they wanted to keep the debt side flat because they were also asking at the same time for 5.3, 5.2, 5.3, I can't remember the exact amount, revenue cap, initial revenue cap, a fully on topic. So they wanted the debt component to be, they had some things they had to do, but the operating question was the most important element. And that was a debt increase because of that. So, and again, what you're able to do for roughly a million-dollar-a-year payment is going to depend on the interest rate market and how far, maybe be able to cover all your needs, it's too early to tell if you'd be able to do that. But it is a favorable time when you're just asking or considering the question.
And that leads really great into our next topic, which is looking at facilities, master plan, planning budget committee outline. Because as Mike had said, you know, it's about, there was back in the day, remember when I said Fondalac, hey, let's have it at the quietest time, lowest turnout, get there and lost by like 40. Let's keep it all in one referendum, one question, you can, you know, whatever works, fail miserably. And one thing I know about Fondalac, one thing I know about Northfondalac, one thing I know about people's honesty is the best thing possible. And, you know, money and resources are always necessary to make things work, but the biggest thing is, is what is the plan for our community? What does our community want out of our schools? What do they want? Not only for now, but for 10 years, for 20, for 30 years. When that referendum was passed in the late 1990s, Horace Mann High School wasn't just built for the time, until 2018. It's, it's built to go up to 2050. It's built to be there. And what we're looking at is, what do we need? What does this community want? Because I'm not going to be here when these buildings are gone, nor will most of you guys. But the thing is, is what can we look at? What does this building, what does this community want? And that leads really good into this. So does anybody have any questions for Mike? All right, well, thank you, Andrew. I appreciate it. So we know that, before we're going to go forward, we, with this portion of it, we knew we had, we have needs. We don't really have a maintenance budget per se for capital improvements. We really don't. I mean, that's, when we look at what do, what do we need to do first, is how do we take care of the achievement and the growth of students? A lot of that has to do with the high-quality people, training, materials that we do to instruct those students. So one thing that continually gets looked at is maintenance. What do we really need? How can we work it? Matter of fact, we have now two new minivans that we're leasing. We turned in some, two of our old cars, we're actually saving money, lower insurance rates, and we have more capacity and better gas mileage. So we're always looking at things of how we can reduce maintenance, but the reality of it is, unit vents go out, boilers, you know, ELC was supposed to be torn down back when the first original referendum in the late '90s was passed. We have needs, and, you know, just like with your house or just like with your car, when do you decide to keep fixing it, or when do you decide that we need to invest in something different? And what I'm very, very aware of going down Milwaukee and listening to people who have been through this facilities plan, these ideas for communities, is that this plan asks me something that the community embraces and wants and thinks is good, and things will make us better. And so what we're going to do is that we already have invested with Bray, they've given us preliminary findings, and I'm just getting all those data and that information. We all got that a couple of months ago. I'm going to be putting it all online so people can look at that, looking at all the HVAC, electrical, plumbing, the initial plan, ideas, you know, things like that of where we sit. That's one piece. Okay? The next piece is, what do we want for our kids and for our school? Horace Mann High School, Bestial Middle School, Friendship Learning Center, Early Learning Center. What do we want our schools to look like and what are they going to need to be in order to serve our kids? So this is an outline that I want to go through, that I put together, taking in information from what I've learned from other schools I've gone through master planning, and see if this is something that's worthwhile, legitimate. And one of the things that I'm very aware of, as Mike had said, I don't want to start a process to look at what we, what our facilities are like and just keep reacting, just as you asked today. I think, Brian, you said, why are we refinancing? Well, we've been looking at this idol that, since I got here in 2000, or six years ago as superintendent, I've been always asking, what can we do to refinance? Because it's, it's tighter and tighter and tighter. How can we leverage and get our money borrowing less and less expensive? Because that only then turns into good things for kids. Same type of thing here. So we now have, the reality of it is, we can't build schools, we can't rip out windows, we can't... we can't tear off rust, we can't do any of that. We really can't, because it significantly change the amount of resources that we have for our kids. I mean, we have reconstructed, like there's sometimes we're saving, we have money around where we fixed the blatter, the concrete, we did that, did some different signage, got the lines going, fixed univans, we just got water eaters up at the high school, new boilers, where are the new boilers at?
One in Friendship and one in Friendship.
Yeah, so that's, that's one of the things that we have to keep doing. But now we're able to look back and say, okay, great. But now let's spend some time, and let's really look at what would our, how can we most fiscally responsible and also let's best for our kids in learning, set up ourselves with the facilities master plan? What's that look like? Let's develop that master plan. What's that look like? And once we develop that master plan, how can we afford it? What's that going to be as far as moving forward? How do we want to chew it off? What's that going to be? And that's what this is right here. Okay? So just kind of going through it quickly, stage one, and any information, feedback right now, if you have information, give me, if you sit and you digest this, let me know. One thing that I've built in here is pragmatism, because I think that's important, that we take time to get the input, to get things done, and then also to be as transparent as possible. Bray Architects, the facility study is completed, we just had Mike in, staff input, we got a little bit, just kind of, hey, what do you think about, really talking more and more, looking at how instructions changing. Development Committee guidelines and purpose, which that's something that I want to talk about a little bit more here, that we can finalize in February. What do we want that person to be? How do we want that makeup to look? And then create, build an information site so that people can continue to look at what's going on, what data information's out there, when there's meeting dates, how are you going to input that? Stage two, committee formation and learning sessions, have this for March and April, be three to five times, talk about the study, and then just do some initial listening sessions. Now, here's the key here. My recommendation is, is that we don't have listening sessions in this building, at Friendship. We have listening sessions over at Flood Holmes, over at Gaslight Terrace, out in Friendship, go to the Village, maybe ask if we can piggyback onto a Village meeting sometime, or beforehand, go to Library, go to people. Go to people and talk to them, and ask some major questions about what do you think is good about the school district? What do you think that we need to improve on, and what, you know, what's your vision? What are these three to five questions of what this district should look like for the future? Take that information, develop all of that, and then have that group then say, okay, we got that information, we got the information from Bray, we got the information from our educators, now let's take that information, let's develop a survey. And this is, I think, one of the most critical parts, and this, my suggestion is we go through a place called School Perceptions, which is on Slinger Wisconsin. We develop a succinct, one, maybe one and a half page survey that, asking our voters, our constituents, our citizens about our school district. Here's what, who we are, what do you think we need to improve on, what are we doing well? This is something that we're looking at the future as far as trying to be proactive to plan for our facilities, and this is kind of what we're looking like. Get that information back. Once we get that information back, then the committee stays together, and they also learn about budgeting. And I think that's going to be one of the key parts. Like you guys heard tonight from Mike, this isn't something where we can just say, hey, let's go to referendum and build something new, or let's go, instead of fixing this, let's go ask for opera. This, this community can't, can't do that. And I don't think it's reasonable to do that. But when we do have opportunities where we could, how could that work? And what, where does the money come from? How are we going to be able to afford this? Where does money come from right now? And how do we do things? Revenue caps, what does that mean? How does that impact? School districts are the only ones with revenue caps. No one else in any municipality, work and state work, has a revenue cap. I mean, we can't go above unless we go to referendum for certain things. Matter of fact, remember, three years ago, it got cut by five hundred and fifty dollars per kid? We are still not funded at the same level that we were three years ago. So I think that learning process is also a huge part, because you can't build this, or you can't improve with just month. You need to have resources. So as the committee then moves forward, they look at that information, learn about budgetary things, so that then, over the summer, and then the next fall, come up with, hey, here's our first idea. This is all information, data, this is what we think. We've talked to different partners, we've talked to community, we've talked to focus groups, this is what our plan, this is, if we could find this guy, facilities, long-term facilities planned for us, and our district would be this. And then we talk with the board and the group, we say, okay, what's that look like? Let's kind of flush that out. Is there an A, a B, a C, a D? Is there something that's really necessary? Can we tier important things? How could that look? Then what we do is we go back, and we do another community survey, says, after all this information, we do listening sessions and information sessions, we have these four options. What's most palatable? What do you think about these options? What, what would be good, what would be bad, a difference, but, but are these options good, and which, which ones would you support? Why or why not? Then, just as he had talked, Mike had talked about, you know, that he looking at something five days out, once we get that, then I suggest that by January of two thousand and sixteen, which is a year from now, what we would be doing is, is that we have vetted that out, and now we have our long-term plan. You know, tweaking it as time goes on, if we need to, but we have our long-term plan that then we go out and we educate people, we go and maybe we have to look at specific things in different districts, or find information, or find things, we'll know more about the economy, we'll know more about funding, all that kind of stuff. So then in August of two thousand and sixteen, if we are going to go to ask for more funding, if we're going to take and say, you know what, we want to accelerate this plan, or we need more resources for this plan, we know we can afford it because X, Y, and Z, then what I would recommend is that we come to the board, and there'd be a presentation to say, this is the referendum question, or questions that we would want because of all this information, because this is our long-term plan, and this is what we recommend being on the ballot for the two thousand and sixteen presidential election. Could be one question, two questions, three questions, no questions. Then all of a sudden, from that point forward, once again, information's out there, more learning sessions, amp it up a little bit, so that people have any questions, you can keep refining exactly what the plan looks like, but we have that all set. So what we're looking at is taking two years, and assets are just less than two years, and saying, hey, here's our house financially, this is what our real needs are, this is our first ever in the history of a final act kind of long-term facility plan, how can we get the resources, and how do we want to execute this? Questions?
One thing I do learn from this last week, doing something like this, especially we said before, that any community idea, we can't, we can be targeted, you know, if we need a planning committee. Something, one thing, talking to people, everything they said is, this cannot be fore-said by the board, administration, you have to be, you have to have ideas, it's got to be theirs, and then we have to break it off. We tell them this, that we want this, that we want this, and we're going on this kind of like saying, this is all ours, we got to make sure we really get the communities, we have a lot of support. We all have ideas up here, it's like, here for us to say, what if we want our camp on there?
I hear you, a hundred percent. Mike?
How many people you looking to get on the committee, the Spanish?
I don't know.
Steve, what, how many do you guys have on the high school committee?
Well, I guess probably twenty, I would think, eighteen, eighteen, twenty.
So then, like, you just have like an average of like fifteen people show up, like, for meetings?
It was, we think back then, so it was pretty well attended, people actually committed to it, or, or, or.
So how did you get people involved? How did you get word out to get that interest? I mean...
It was assessment, I guess, between the administrative and board members, thinking people would be good.
Did you have a pretty good mix of like, you know, like, you know, kids in the district or pretty good?
Yeah, obviously the interest probably a little more with parents and kids at school, but then we had to, you know, really, a lot of people at Village, and it's a lot, it's a very good number.
Remember, this really, on the front here, my team was...
Very important, have various representatives.
Did you have good representation from all parts of the school district?
Sure. I mean, it's twenty years, I'm also trying to remember exactly, it's all a while, but yeah, that was important. Don Kelly was the superintendent then, and he was resident out of Bednite, and he was very, very, I'm making sure Friendship was represented.
I think it's a good idea, you're talking about, going to a different community center, whatever, North Fine House might be one, also that you guys, like, people know that, say, like, at two o'clock, you're going to have a listening session over at the community center or something like that, senior center or something. I think that's, that's a good idea.
I think more here, if you could make, you know, a committee, have some committees, I mean, I don't think you'd ever want to turn people away from getting an opinion on it. Right, people have all opinions.
I mean, I, and I know it's kind of, you know, like, less than a two-year period for me to the presidential election, it's kind of logical, so you don't, you don't want to get it too big either, or you don't want to turn people away, you want, yeah, you want to, want to keep it moving and make it so it works.
I think the key is the person, person's charity, focus, and definite direction is really going to key. You start going off on a tangent, you really got to establish what your goals are trying to put at a meeting, and not allow that to go off on a tangent, just knowing it from a previous standpoint.
From a village standpoint.
Getting back on track of what we're doing, getting us off.
Do you guys have anybody that you can think of, that you want me to, because I was thinking like after this meeting, because that's, you know, the makeup, really good, like Friendship, we need somebody from there, El Dorado, the town of Fond du Lac, I mean, right, Hyundai dealership, I think we have, you know, in the town there, Fond du Lac, there's, we have some residents, so I think that's number one, look at, at least those different demographics, because I know some people that live there, you know, but then you start asking around, because I think you hit it right on the head too, Mike, we want people on this committee that don't necessarily have kids here anymore, you know, that are interested, and then also when we look at people retired, you know, that are retired, that are on that, hey, this is what my income is, you know, what, what values do I find in the school? Because I think what we can do here, too, is, you know, as we look at our school, and another thing we're going to talk about is the Oriole Fitness Center, if you will, is that our district has always had a very good history and kind of policies of this facility as, as a gift from the community, and thus it should be used by the community, not only just for school, but for other things also. So there could be some things, I was in Lioness Pickensafe, and Dick, and John Bester was there, and he says, hey, what's going on? I was reading that, you go to another referendum, what's happening? I said, I said, we're just looking at different options, because he was big on the referendum with the gym and the space up there. And the first thing he says to me, you know what you should probably think about, is maybe, you know, a lot of these suburban Milwaukee places are putting artificial turf into buildings so that you can practice in some buildings, and I said, thanks, John, appreciate that information, you know, it's unbelievable. And then another lady said, you know, I was thinking about this as Robin Gatters, you know, what if you would, would partner with the Village Library, and maybe make one library for ELC and the Village together, that would work together, share resources, and be some, and I never even thought of that. You know, I didn't even think about the ways we could partner, what we can do that can really be fiscally responsible and enhance what we have. So if we can get people on board that have all these ideas, that's what you're talking about, is that this idea then becomes our community's, and it's bigger than anything that we already have. Because right now, the only preconceived thing, right now on video, it'll be online, I'm telling you right now, is ELC is taking a lot of resources in order to keep up and going, and it's not being able to meet the needs, number one, of our, of our kids, for the environment that we need, and also I know that our daycare facility, as much as we try to fix that, isn't too inspiring to get people to want to bring their children. So I do know that that building has a lot of need, and I think Dave, and talking with Mary, I know Mary Schultz, she would very much be interested in being on it. Now we have somebody who was, you know, a Village resident for many years, and also has some, also custodial stuff, so, other than that, I don't have any preconceived, and I love hearing the ideas other people have, because they, they think a lot different in that, because this is for the future, if there is anything. But the one thing I love about right now is that we can't, what I, what I dislike more than anything else, is when you start to get people, energy, and moving them to a certain area, and doing things, and then you get them, and they're like, well, we can't do it anyway, so we spent all this time doing stuff, and now there's really no opportunity. We do have an opportunity if there is a need, and we show that need, and we develop a plan to utilize it. So that's, I think, why right now, as we see these two things kind of collide, this conversation would not have happened three years ago, or four years ago, because it just wouldn't have been a reality that could have worked. But now, I think it could. So, so what do you guys think? So like...
Well, first of all, I have a question, what is the last bond payment of these bonds? But they're not called, so it would have to be, first of eighteen or seventeen?
Eighteen.
So it's eighteen, that seems to be almost a two-year gap from a referendum.
Right. Well, here's the deal. What happens is, is let's say, let's say that we do go in there, and there is a question for debt in two thousand and sixteen. How that can be phrased and how that can work is that that can start to be utilized by the next year, even though you're paying on one. So what you're, what you end up doing is, within your referendum, you referen, you levy the money to prepay, like you said, into an escale of that, so then you start to build right. So you don't lose money, per se, but that money is, it's all about the debt and how they structure those things.
You're going to add on the debt base.
Correct. See, if we wait till two thousand and seventeen, now you pay for an election, and I don't think you get the turnout, and I think that's still a long term out, because we still have a building with some needs, we still have resurfacing, and we have rusts, and we have, I mean, I just, you know, like, one of the things that came through with Besser, with the Bray study is that where we have Bestial's office is in the middle of school. You know, the reality from a safety standpoint, that office should probably be right where our, where Jenny Harney and Zach Ruxford was. Well, that's a substantial cost to move and remodel and do all those things, you know, but if we, if that's something that's necessary, and we do that in the next year or two, well then that's going to cut into services and staffing and, you know, into our budget. But if that's something that would be part of this plan, then we're looking at the future that we can do, but it's still a need that we have. So we can start to do this, like, in two thousand and seventeen, even though our debt doesn't retire in eighteen, because you actually pay that, and then start a new one again, if that makes sense.
It takes a time, first, it doesn't start to happen, it just takes a time.
We actually levy to pay that off ahead of time in order then to go, so you're still paying the same amount of money, it's just a different time. Yep, and I, and I, to me, transparency, openness, that presidential election, if we're, if we're going to do anything, is, I would say, the most honest and best way to go about doing something like this. Because then, like Mike said, it's about the message, not about the turnout. And that's what I think, if, if something like, the process to me is going to be more important than the result. Because if we do the process the correct way, this plan will be something the community wants, not feels like they have to do. And if, not if the community doesn't want, like I said, for all of us sitting in this room, whatever happens, if there is a referendum building, we're not going to be around for half of it, you know? So it's, it's pretty exciting. Just like with, I think about Gordy Stedbacher, you know, he was a big driving force into the high school, and he was around for what, ten years of it?
Eleven, yeah. Some, some great stuff we have out for these four.
Well, I think that actually, it's fine now, but it may be categories, you talked about the community, and they should have representatives of residents or staff members, you know, professional staff, support staff, and missionary, and some other, perhaps some village official, like last time Benny C. Oax was working, Village President, she was involved in that, which was very, had communication, at the time when we worked with, came very well, organizations, things like that.
I like that idea of categories. All right, so I have, and then what I'll do is add, you know, within the next week or so, I'll develop kind of like a, like a press release, or I'll get some information out there, you know, in the paper, and also I'll, I'll go on the radio tomorrow, but then I'm sure waiting until maybe another time we go on the radio, we can start to promote it, and see if there's any interest. And then also, if you know of people that can fit something, so I have residents.
Another category we used last time, which was recommended by Hoffman, was involving people who we think could possibly be against it, right from the start, because they learn as we learn, as we went along, and officially change their minds.
Okay. So I got residents of staff, both educators, administrators, and then support staff, and then village official. I've got each municipality, make sure that we have people from each municipality, so that would be the town, the village.
Parents and, there.
Chip.
Not parents, it's from each community.
Parents.
Doesn't hurt to have some professional people that understand things like that.
Steve, you have seniors, because they utilize facilities or obviously voting, they're working.
I want to say, seniors, graduate seniors.
Graduating seniors, because they're gonna be in, voting for, saying, knowing what our facilities are, I think they can just. In that process.
She was a board member, like, like Wagner's daughter, her name, she was on board with this. That was an example of that, she wasn't far from school. And we also had, at that time, and I don't know if this will be different change, but we had two committees, the initial committee then kind of wrapped things up and then there was a board decided to go forward. The, you know, referendum committee, so it was more grassroots. Maybe tip a little bit more, uh, parents, because we need more workers type of thing than studiers.
Sure.
Just a general, not specifically all that.
So this is like, this is the plan makers and then if, if we, or whatever that plan is, which would be like August of two thousand and sixteen, after that, then we get whoever wants to maintain, but then even grow it a little larger and say, hey, this is now, this group has worked through this. This is the long-range facility plan, education plan for the district, and this is the questions that are gonna be asked. Need more people help share that information.
Steve, how long was the process from start to finish for you? I mean, was it a couple of years or?
Well, at least a year, I might have been more.
Back then we could take.
They wanted to have a referendum, so that then have to fit into the election cycle. And we had a special election, I remember. I have an old podcast someplace. In fact, I'll do that, because I might get some idea, let us show you our names, what kind of work, what names.
Sure.
We had, um, and somebody, I, you know, and one thing, like, when you look at the co-chairs, whoever, I think, what I would recommend or is somebody on, one of the board members definitely be on that committee. So if they, you know, when the information gets shared, it's, it's one of the board members sharing it to the other board members, I don't want it to, you know, I think that would be very, very beneficial.
All right, we got any names that would, oh, Mary I know was very interested in, Mary Schultz.
I mean, like, say, that's somebody like Mike Will, but he's got a lot going on.
Or Mike Streeter, possibly.
Oh, Mike's on.
All right, good.
I can raise anyone.
Yeah, I'm sure everyone.
Sorry.
He'd be here, a villager.
Yeah, maybe a, a employee.
That would be good, that would be really good probably is maybe Lori, since she has kids, she works in the village and she's got a lot, I think Lori King could bring a lot of insight. Now, I know, uh, I know Robin Gatters was pretty interested, like, she doesn't, her kids go here, but she doesn't live in the village, is that bad? She's an elementary teacher. Uh, any of those, I wonder if she'd reach contact there. I think she brings insight.
She brings something different down.
She actually brings money in, I mean, with her kids, ultimately.
I would take one or two members of a large community, that would be a factor. If it was dominated by people being over here, obviously that's.
I agree, I think she can bring.
And one thing she could bring is, she works up in Oshkosh at the new elementary school that I just built, so they just went through something, you know? And I, one thing I know about Robin is, is she gets pretty, when she gets into something, she gets into it, so that would be. Then there is another one, um, that was here, uh, Kowski.
The old Kowski Garland.
Because they were there at the beginning, I remember. Anybody else that you can think of? Right, right, yeah, it's, I'm looking if he's involved in everything. You know, that's, that brings another part to this too, is that our facilities and everything, when you look at working with the village, there's a huge youth and other groups that utilize our facilities. And I know that having that perspective too, from a non-school member, but also working with youth, could be a big help. Thank you. Where does all information go and come from in this whole village? Classic cuts gotta be represented somewhere, I think, we're done with it.
I'm sure Dager said she should be able to, uh, interesting.
Okay, well, there we go. And we have an alumni?
Yep.
Do you want someone maybe from the optimists? I was just thinking of all the guys who were at the cafe opening and some of them, you know, living all over, but some of them have grandkids, some of them don't have any kids in the district.
Yeah, that's an excellent idea, that was right in my last interview service, I remember this. And they branch out to other groups. And professional staff, like, we have Brian Switz, resident.
Or, if not Brandon Heather. We don't need, uh, you know, might be pretty good, I don't, she's, I'm trying to think of somebody that doesn't have any kids, but lives here. Remember Joan Blatts, Pugs Not Drugs, that shirt, I don't know, does Joan come to your meetings ever? Do you know Joan? She, I, she moved here a couple of years, her, she was very, they used to have a camper down on Eden and, uh, she's, she's a, she wore that chick, remember she wore the shirt, Pugs Not Drugs?
Or, and if Heather Switz wouldn't, I would think Renee Forsythe would also be good.
There we go. Mel, you think anybody at your school? Those in the district that teaches or?
Are you thinking parents or educators?
Yeah, anybody.
I'm sure there will be a number of teachers that would be interesting.
I'd be Janelle.
Yeah, Janelle.
We have Bessie Allen, PTO right there, Adam. All right.
I can think of several parents too, it just depends on numbers.
All right, so we gotta get the scope of what this is all about and get these, uh, get some of these names and get some things going. So, give me some marching orders. So by the February meeting, um, what I need to do is I need to have kind of, um, I have to have a, a job description, what the responsibilities are gonna be to come to the meetings. The cause of this is to look at information about our district, kind of, your job is to help facilitate and be the people, get the information, and come up and represent the community with ideas of how we can use things. And I'm sure there's descriptions that I can steal from out there from other districts and companies.
We, I think, um, the lesser screen is not too big, we can appoint a committee with the board, actually, with the name specifically is, the Turd Committee and then because, and then we can follow all over, meeting laws and stuff.
Yeah, which I love, because then it's all open, because then there's nothing like a, so like, if, when we have a meeting, if somebody wants to come, they can still come. They might not be participating in it, but it can be official, that way people can always know what's going on. Yep. And it doesn't preclude us for, as we go forward, if we have to negotiate new things, that's still a, a function of the board and the closed session, if we can do those things, so we won't be jeopardizing our ability to leverage or to negotiate.
Okay, I recall we did last thing too, we spent a pretty long effort on enrollments and there was, I don't know if they're on a DPI or if they still exist, I'm not certain, it was a statement.
We could.
A bunch of information on forecasting of enrollments, which is a question that always comes up.
And that's something with this Baird model, that's part of it, that we're already invested in, so I think that's a great idea. And I think that will all be dabbling when you think about, well, the, the educational needs, do we have enough buildings? One thing, um, that, and the others with Melanie, we're, uh, looking at this, uh, this CLC grant, it's called Community Learning Grant, and so it'd be a before and after school program for our first through fifth grade kids. You know, and if you've been to Bad Friendship after school or before, they're just as a group, you know, what does this look like? I mean, if, if we do get this program starting next year, it'd be a hundred thousand dollars every year to run it, with the staff and run it. Is that, the, the one thing is, is that it proves and shows that maybe we do need more space, maybe that is part of it. All right, so my responsibilities then are to, uh, committee description. Committee member roles. Set some dates or some window dates, if you will, because it can't be people know, who know what it is. And then, yep, should I start reaching out already? All right. All right, so what I'll do then is I'll take, um, and, uh, I'll kind of take what we've kind of done to get this first answer, kind of like what I did here, of what the committee looks like, um, what are the, um, what was it? Categories of members that we're looking to fill? So people, when they get to the, I think that's a beautiful thing, so as, like, category, like with Mike, his category or what kind of his lens is, he's a community member and also a village board member. So he's looking, also with no kids in the schools anymore, so those are kind of those, we have that lens. Now, do we have a lens of a, a, a parent who has a child that's, you know, just coming through or just new to the district? You know, do we have that one? Do we have that lens, okay, you're looking at how's this serve, or what, what's, you know, friendship, we have, so we got you. All right, so I'll get that together and then what my, what my goal will be is by Tuesday of next week, everybody in this, the board, administration, and Mike, if that's all right, I'll, I'll have you on, so you'll be the founder, you'll be part of this thing, so I'll keep you on there. And then, um, before we get the whole thing appointed, we can kind of kick it around. Um, the only thing that I'll ask though is, is that when I send it out, anybody have any input, any board member just respond to me singly? You know, respond to all, everybody else can, you know, respond as they, as they want, that way we don't have a walking board or anything like that, so. Because like you, if Mike would email something back about whatever, everybody could see that, uh, once Steve or Ryan or John, if you have any ideas or anything, I don't want, those ideas should come directly to me and I can use them, so we keep everything on that. Open meetings, if you will. All right, so I'll wait for that by next Tuesday. Thank you. All right, next part. Uh, board convention.
Nice picture.
Oh, yeah.
Well, the follow-up one, not professionally, was a little nicer, but then had the plaque.
You would have been proud of us too, we, um, we didn't just applaud when Steve would say we common app, but.
Hold on, hold on, don't even say that.
Oh, okay. Oops. I think I deleted.
So he was the first one and there was probably six of us or seven, who did this and everybody went, oh.
That was fun.
And the speakers on Monday and, or on Wednesday and Thursday were very good, a lot of great breakout sessions. The speaker on Sunday, we can't get that hour back, yeah, hour fifteen, that was, that was kind of painful. I mean, she was smart, she wrote this book on bullying and, uh, and kids growing up, but, I don't know, it was, it was painful.
I thought she took chunks of her, her, you know, like, educational type session and played here and stuck them in the middle of her speech, because this joint didn't, uh.
I talked to Miss H from Fondlelag, was there, she, I said the same thing we did, it sounds like her core audience was high school kids or grade school kids talking about bullying and just, like, we went out halfway through and you can see everyone's on their phone.
Yeah, we went down the road.
We missed on Friday, started to finish with.
And I give, I give Governor Walker credit, came in there, he, you know, everybody, you know, with his policies and what's looking at the public education, buddy came in and, this Vulcan buddy, you know, gave credit for coming in and doing that. So, but overall, the delegate assembly, pretty much everything.
I wish they ever would have expanded a little bit more on the two-year scholarships and these, you know, we talked about it a few different times in the speech, but, anyway. Um, delegate assembly, pretty much as expected, the first eleven things just flew by, passed with like ninety-two, ninety-three percent, yes, on all of the votes. Then we got to, uh, here the, uh, the resolution on rehiring WRS retirees, and it's the same old thing with that, you know, some people don't get the double-dipping concept, that the pension that somebody decides to take a little early or even at the regular retirement age, is earned by that person and, and they can get that money. So there's a lot of discussion about that, um, but the amendment did pass changing the sixty-day wait period for me to rehire to thirty days, which wasn't what it was originally for many, many years, so, um. But I voted, are going for that amendment and then for the overhaul to, um, you know, sometimes after it goes on for quite a while, somebody stands up with a voice or two, and it's about, if you have a problem with rehiring retirees in your district, then go rehire those, hire a new teacher if you want, and you don't have to worry about it, so. So that became part of the policy and, and two other ones had some discussion, but still passed, fifteen, sixteen, which is one of, about allowing school board members to serve as volunteer coaches or advisors. Again, I think, I think it was mostly misunderstood, right now it's illegal according to, you know, legal, um, opinion, um, the, uh.
Is that Mike Joll, that, that Mike Joll's?
Well, it's kind of the overriding opinion of conflict interests. Yeah, it's a, a legal principle, so I think serving as your own master or anything like that.
I don't get that, because all due respect, well, I disagree with you, because the bottom line is, if anything comes into play, it's like you with your, then it should be a conflict of interest or not, right? For you with your wife being in the district, it's no difference when you volunteer versus having a spouse or someone in the district, you just recuse yourself from anything that come across, so I don't buy the argument that, yeah, I've never had, because, one, I know I've never have done that in basketball or nor have you, you always recuse, and it's, it's, it was weird, but. It's been, I don't know, in my March meeting, probably, I'm done.
And they were probably, not coaching. Word, because there's no law that's, you know, the concept of common law, I guess, versus, um, law that's gonna determine your court cases and opinions and stuff like that.
And, and the reality of it is, it comes down to, it's not the district's responsibility, it lies on the board member too, so. Regardless of whatever happened, it would be on that board member's decision, it's everybody making, and we, we've always covered all those things, had those discussions, but, yeah, interesting.
So it's, it's the past.
Why did it, I guess, what started to come up, why did it come up now? Because I know in the previous years, it's not ever come up, except my, my tenure on the board, not necessarily this year.
You're not alone, there, there are board members who stood up in support of it, saying, well, I coach, I'm seventh grade volleyball, and I think if I am called by, why shouldn't I be, you know, so, so it's happening.
It's like student teaching, or not student teaching, but substitute teaching in the district, you know, like you substitute teach, but you can't, you know, it's all, it comes down to that individual board member's decision on what they're gonna do and how it can keep pathways of interest out of this. And, and remember all these, these are, anybody, we could write one, they could go there, get on there, and then, just because they're on there, this is just part of like the planks or what we do with SAA and, you know, that thirty to sixty days. I'm not gonna, I'm not a wager man, I don't think that'll change for a long time, but.
I took my piece of that. When you're in a smaller community, when you're looking, I mean, on a regular basis for someone to help out, regardless of what area, be it coaching or around the school, you want that ball.
So that's, you know, that's part of the policy note that the School Board Association would be lobbying for, have that changed. And the other one that took a lot of discussion was, the last one, pathways to alternative teacher license, mainly kind of focused on like the tech ed area, certain, there's certain things, we all know that, very hard right now to find, to turn. The tech ed is, fits this better because you have, maybe an industry, you know, a lot about whatever modeling or metals or woodworking, great teachers, not, this allows finding a different, a shorter way for them to get into the classroom rather than going through the floor. But that brought a lot of discussion both ways, because people have been strongly about the value of a full teacher education against them, in short, in some way, I guess. You know, we think it's common sense, even if the person can't handle the classroom discipline wise or whatever, then they won't be a teacher very long, right? They'll be vetted all through the other process. So that was about all on the, it's been nice the last few years, there hasn't been that much, people that stand up every time and have to talk, and talk, and talk, so it's been a lot more enjoyable. I was just gonna mention a couple of things from breakout sessions that I found interesting. What I went to was about your school situation, how that's changing and continuing to change, and the proposal by the Assembly, um, change important, poverty failing districts to independent charters, which everyone realizes is a different animal than a district charter school, but, and then how poverty has the biggest impact on student achievement, achievement. There's many things that go into student achievement, but, and poverty doesn't necessarily sentence somebody to not be able to succeed in school, obviously, but, but it has, does have the biggest impact. Girls' schools have increased poverty in recent years and declining resources, competition and things like that at home, and numbers, so they're just continually hammered, and I also found out that because of the independent charter school deduction off of the top from state aid, that our district loses one hundred twenty-one thousand dollars every year because of that, so, and stay with that. And then, well, at the same time, public schools still outperform voucher schools, you know, overall, as a group or as a whole, so. And then another one about student-centered versus teacher-centered classrooms, and how important this is going to be to, and the focus of that was hiring, start right out with hiring, is teachers who are student-centered and who, in the interview process, even talk with them in a certain way, and students are always in that answer, the questions that you ask in the interview process. This guy, he had some interesting things about how to hire, how to, something that not working right up here, but just a different way of doing things. One thing I would tell my son, not to use the stock answer, why do you want to be a teacher? Well, because my mom's a teacher, and I was a teacher, and I just want to be a teacher. It's, it's, you know, getting hired probably is obvious, and we'll talk about students, but, and it's, there's one other thing I want to mention too, about achievement, was, I don't remember the names of the studies, so I probably find it in this here, but, two different studies showed that every ten days that a teacher is not in classroom, student achievement goes down three percent. And that's kind of an overall thing, and we start to think about, and, and the point was, it was in a wellness and how to keep your staff, and with stuff that we're doing with all our initiatives and stuff, and not only, not just to lower your insurance costs and to help the kids, but, they're sick, they're sick, and I'm not sure you can do about that, but really look at how often I'm pulling teachers out for stuff. It's valuable stuff, obviously, to a point, maybe, too much of it is hurting their kids, just out of the classroom, more, so. And I don't think that was ten consecutive weeks, I think it was a course of years, so. That's all that I have. Another good.
Were you writing something else there? Well, a few breakout sessions too, or on referents, which I got information there, Taylor's process of different ways of doing them. One school built in a year, started to finish, they named it after that one, I don't know how they went through it, but that was, not less than a year, I meant real ground. Again, I actually got referred to build ground, built it. I've got some good ideas, just good insight into the process if we have to go through that, just views, both school districts, I think, that referendum were both roughly our size, maybe was ten of our size, so, some of the challenges they had doing it, history of the referents and stuff like that, passing and failing, and one of them, I think I mentioned sixteen was one of the first ones in all the history of that. Went and wanted long-term, planning for buildings, just kind of process going through. It's really nice to see a daughter way, someone else does it, and we're kind of similar to what we're doing, maybe not necessarily in the order that they did, but we're much older guys over there. I went to a healthy student, was an engaged student, that was pretty interesting, and talked, mainly basically the sixty minutes of activity that you see in the M F L, they want sixty minutes per day, and then each, each student active, necessarily in school and stuff like that, outside of school. And one thing is, we're sitting there for an hour, and about twenty-five minutes, half hour into it, they had to stand up and do a little activity, which, I talked to you a few, we hate doing activities, not what I want to do, I want to listen and learn, but, so, what made, it made you do like stretching and talk to your neighbor and stuff like that, and got back to it, and she, well, five minutes later, said, you feel more engaged now because you got, and it just, I really was, sitting these things all day long, and you're about half an hour into it, you start putting your clock, you want to comfort your chair, and you're not really focusing on what you're doing, but during that point, I realized, hey, I'm more, paying more attention now, so one of the students doing, in the middle of school, said, it's not, it's okay, just get, have kids come, get in the middle class, get walking, those, the class, and have to sit back down, they get re-energized, and it's different things like that, so. And, well, there, it was pretty much all that I had. Speaker degree, I went to like breakout session, I'm the main speaker on day one, and most times you go into a breakout session, there's a hundred chairs and there's thirty people sitting there, just people bring in chairs from the other room, people are sitting on the floor, this guy was acting as the speaker, you know, if you're not able to have anyone in your, it's great.
Kevin Honeycutt, I think I said you guys will like this.
Well, it's a good one, I mean, other than Friday's breakout set, or Friday's speaker session, usually I get a dot or two on breakout sessions, these are all good this year, so.
All right. All right. Next, once again, looking, just kind of give you a heads up on what's going down. We have talked about with that PEP grant, we got so much great facility stuff to use, knowing that there's a cult of wall blocking and how things are working, we figured, well, what can we do again to help our community utilize our facilities again, the gift that we got from our community? Well, working with Jenny, Fiant staff, we're gonna be working with Dave. We have, now have a proposal, and you can see that, feel like at the timeline, once after tonight, I'm gonna go back and talk with Jenny, and we're gonna talk about what signage we need, also job responsibilities for the ability of people that we're gonna hire, work through what the business plan and what that'll look like, how much they get paid. Then by February twenty-sixth, we're hiring and training fitness center staff, and what's that gonna look like, where are they gonna be, how that's gonna work, where is the door gonna be, how's, I think it'll go on. Our second, first day open, then you can see thirteenth, that sixteenth and beyond to promote it. You can see here the cost this information was gotten from, like Valders, Chilton, on the east side of, east, what, east of Lake Winnemango, it seems that there's quite a few, so, Jenny did some research and found this information, seemed very aligned, so we'll give it a run, this is what it kind of looks like. It's gonna begin with bands and horseman halls for walking, cardio center in the high school, and then the locker room, shower facilities, locks may not be left unlocked, it's just people use them. So it's just, it's not gonna be the weight room and everything, right now, we're gonna have to wait to see how we can do a training, but start small, it's pretty much just gonna be those areas, so, see how it all works out, and keep tweaking as we go.
One question, do you, do you have any concern with, like, there's basketball practice going on, and you know people wearing locker rooms with the kids, I mean, is there that a concern at all, or?
Yeah, you know, it's, well, that...
I mean, that's, you got, if you know basketball practice and you're showering, getting ready, and you don't know, I mean, that's, maybe I'm being paranoid, you don't know, how do we know who's in there?
Locker room versus...
Yeah, we don't use, you know what, I just do a line through that, that opens up a whole can of worms. So they can shower and stuff at home, come, come with your stuff on and like, hey, great, that's why we, that's why we bet your stuff, cool, not an issue.
Especially seeing there's no morning session, where somebody would go out to work, like, they're, they're lying, so.
There's sweat, just, cool, got information, that's a good idea.
Just, I guess, nobody would put this thing, there's a chance like one person did, ideas for...
Plus, hey, and then another thing, I had a lock, somebody stole something, really, you don't know, let's eliminate that whole thing, great, great point. Difference between a lock, a high school lock.
What could someone do in there, like a camera or something, or hold her, I mean, yeah.
Perfect, no lockroom, it's available, great idea. Anything else? All right, see how it runs? You know, can't wait, and then we'll map out how long a roof is and what that looks like, put up signs, and...
The rate of fees that's at for the community staff, that's...
Staff, yeah.
It's still the same.
Yep, we're good to go, the staff and family and staff, that's still good to go, we want, this is for, this would be for like, Mike Bond coming.
Facilities. None of the rates, those, those aren't the same, so why, why must be, why, why, why big double... Facilities compared to why?
Hey, guess what, if people are to say, this is ridiculous, this is too pricey, oh, look at what our business model looks like, because we have to, that means that our facilities will be used more, which means that we're gonna have to put money into repairing and upkeep, so, you know, and plus, we're gonna have, we're gonna have to pay somebody to be there, this isn't one of those volunteer things, let's make everybody feel good, who's over there is gonna be CPR trained, they're gonna be responsible for checking things in and out, if there's safety, they're gonna be responsible for. Thanks for coming, and then look for someone here, we'll next one. All right, thanks, Ben. All right. Anything else, any, you guys have any questions on the admin team? Just a really quick announcement, I'm gonna go to Madison tomorrow, I called and testify for S B one, which is a senate version of accountability bill, and, and pretty much, my testimony is gonna, you guys get that stuff from John, the S A A, everybody gets that. The senate bill, for the most part, is, we're, I, I think educators, our stance is we're in favor of it, as far as public education, it keeps things as meeting expectations, you see, it keeps that in there, it also says one test, and one of my big things is, is that, it, it'll teach you the test, of course, you have to teach whatever the assessment is, otherwise, why are you doing it? You, you always want to know if what you're doing works. The thing is, is, what is it assessing, how quality and valid and reliable is that assessed? We start branching off, badger exam might not be it, aspire might not be it, but together, if we can find one really good one that can measure growth and achievement of reading and math, we're gonna be in good shape. So that's another thing. And then, another thing with meeting expectations and how they label things, my big point on that is, number one, we aren't a C's district, we aren't, we're not just average in the whole world, our school district meets expectations, you know, in reading and math and growth and achievement. We should get better there, but we do so many other things that aren't measured, that do also count, and until we can find something comprehensive that measures everything, and then we can give some clear grade, which we never could, I think it's appropriate to say, hey, here's how it goes, if you're meeting expectations, that's good, you want to get better and better and better, but that's a lot different than saying you're C minus, C plus, C school. Because I do believe in this, and I, and statistics show this all the time, you always have this, no matter what, and you always have about sixty-seven percent in the middle, and then you have, you know, you have seventeen point, or sixteen point five down here, and sixteen point five over here. Now, if we start to have all the school districts in Wisconsin exceeding expectations, what's that say about our expectations? We're too low. So if you would match us against the, the school district North Bonneville, same, social economics status, kind of similar demographics to a place, the school in Arkansas or Mississippi, we'd be polar. You know what I'm saying, when you look at our achievement and our growth scores. So my big thing is, I don't know why our government would want to make our schools look poor or average, because they're not. So that's the big thing. And then the last thing is, the whole idea, the senate bill does not look at sanctions, they develop the board for public schools that say, if you're not doing well, we're gonna help you get better, and we're never gonna give up, because there is no other alternative. You can't shut down a school in inner-city Milwaukee and think some independent charter someplace from somewhere else will come in and say that, it's not gonna happen. We can never, ever, ever give up, but we can look at resources, look at getting people in, focus, there's a program called Focus that could work. And then the other board, hey, if you're not meeting the expectations, and you're a private voucher school, then you don't get the money for three years, then you can reapply. They shouldn't need to have sanctions, they should, they should, they should have sanctions, they shouldn't need to be improved, because they're just a, you know, so, that's what I'm gonna testify on, maybe throw in some information about, that makes it whole, this folksy, those are there, so. I really don't think there's gonna be much less. I think the Common Core thing's dying, I think that they're starting to figure out, this S B one, the senate bill, is so much different than the House bill, or the House of Assembly. It's, I think there's, I think common sense is gonna start to rule, it's just gonna take a little bit of time. All right.
Question for Deb, on your, under your special education, like you refer to L F I and...
Learning for Independence Program, it's our program out at M P T C, meeting there tomorrow, got five or six, six kids in it now, and I've already got one from La Nada, two from Campbell Sports, and some, I don't even know how many from Bonneville for next year, we should, we should double, we should double already, yeah, yeah.
Turned a prop, go C's.
Yeah, 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 we got several from here, so we're excited, maybe a presentation after a while on it, we'll, we'll get it done, eh?
And great, great news too, so Jana, we get to help to kind of spear that, bring that idea going, that Debbie and her team have done a great job, running with, and Jenny Vallegario, a second grade teacher at Friendship, they both made the, Cole, Samantha, and Debbie recommended Jana, and Melanie recommended Jenny, they both made it to state this year. So they're one of, I'm guessing, two hundred, three hundred people, and I think about a hundred people get recognized, so we've got two people, I, I think really have a good shot of getting, there were thirty, or how many were there, twenty out of the thirty-five that were submitted to our C's that got sent on, and they were two out of those twenty, so. We haven't had anybody go that far in a long time.
It's Alice.
It's Alice. So, all right.
Yeah, I know you're doing some of the course, I see it on the agenda.
Yeah, it was on the, oh, it was on the one that I mailed out later on, so I had that on, and it was posted and stuff, yeah, so, it's not in the one that I put here, but it's, I, I ordered it, yep. So just add that one after discussing, consider that you all see here, I'd sent it out then on Friday, to the board, to the publications also.
All right, seat number one, bottom business number two, discussing, consider, excellent scholarship.
All right, this is, came last year from, from legislation, great thing, now it looks at, instead of having just the, that scholarship for our, our valedictorian, whoever qualifies, now it's for, if you're in a career in technical education track, going to school to study that, being a four or two-year college. Just have to come up with how we go about selecting that, you can see, this is pretty much what the O L A and W A S B suggest, it's pretty much a point system, and that point system, the more you take, and if you do well, you're gonna be one that's lined up, so that's what this is, you can see that this is... So that's what this is. You can see that this is gonna be kinda the formatting that you'll see when I bring the other policies to you in February, March. But this would, this is technically policy five, four, five, one point zero two. The, uh, excellent scholarship, the other one, that academic one is five, four, five, one. So that's where the difference is. But that's, this is, Samantha, you wanna add anything else?
No, just, like you're gonna say, we had to bring up the policy forward, and so if we didn't choose one from NEOLA, um, then we had to create our own, and then also submit it to the DPI, and it's new to everyone. And, you know, so we just said, this makes more sense for us to do.
And if it doesn't work, we'll tweak it for next year. We get one. It's all qualified by how big your high school is, and I think it's from, if you're less than, um, less than eighty students, then you're put into a pool where there's ten total for the state. Then if you're between like ninety and five hundred or six hundred, you get one. Seven or eight hundred to fifteen, you get two, so we get one right now. So that's why you'll see here, it doesn't say one, it says what we qualify for, so it, it fits whatever the state's statute.
State-funded.
State-funded. Here's what happens, the state pays half, and the university pays other half. But, uh, nothing from the student.
Any further discussion? Next item, discussing consider graduation. Graduation, which is about the sixteen day, unless you guys wanna wait till Vicki and Pete come back.
Jen, I don't know, and Samantha, I don't know if she...
I would say wait, because I'm really getting mixed feedback, so I need to figure out something different. It is very split between, um, Sunday, Memorial Day weekend, the last day of school. I've had several people say to me that Friday, and the following Sunday, so, um, I need to figure out to get, you know, much better input than I have so far.
Bring it back to next week, that's fine.
Yeah, then let's get all jacked up, put out surveys for the kids. Remember the last time we had that, we're not gonna have this much ever again.
Perfect storm.
Yeah, it's kinda a perfect storm.
Well, and I think my, my worry about, I think, because I, I sent another one out to the kids today, but to be honest, it's for the parents, and I really feel like have to make the decision, not the kids. Because they're the ones who bring in families and that, so, um, I, I think we just need to go that route, because I'm just not sure my kids are...
You know, we can use, we'll use alert, we'll use our alert system, if that's okay.
Last time we had a consideration of the date, why is to do something just because of the difference in the, the way we have the high school course?
Alright, alright, we'll go to that one next.
Discuss the high school course. See, I had it on six, I'm not, I have six. We can go.
Whoever, whoever works for the clerk, I want you to know.
Yeah, we're going to the last. Want to do the last email?
Sure.
Yeah, that's fine. Yep, I, I was going last.
Alright.
We're delaying our, delaying our...
Just delaying for the next three days. Next, number four, discuss, consider resignations. A, Linda wants to tell the middle school track and field, and Kendra Seidel for Marcy volleyball and others.
No, there isn't, it's just these two, and it says Marcy volleyball. No, I put basketball, I'm mistaken, volleyball. Uh, Linda, just as moving on, and I think that we're already having, um, Mike's interviewing, hopefully I'll have a name for the, the middle school track soon, and Kendra, uh, just wasn't the answer, and, um, it's not gonna be due anymore. We just, we don't have anybody, it's in the reporter, and if any of you, you know, John, I thought you'd be in work, maybe you could take over the volleyball program, really, maybe just, you own it. If we could get anybody.
And Springs is also looking, so Mike's sending communication, as I, I was just to say, you know, if you have several good candidates, you know, keep us on the loop, so.
Alright.
Alright. I'll make that motion.
On second.
Second. Ryan, for discussion, roll call. Debbie?
Yes.
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 Item five, discussing consider contracts for extra duty. A, Tom Kaiser, Bots IQ Coordinator, position. B, as Girls Volleyball Assistant Soccer Coach. C, as Middle School Track and Field.
I have it right up here.
If you look.
Alright, so what I've done, and I, I learned this, we have so many things in fluctuation. Most people, when they put on their agendas for hiring, they don't, they don't put the names. We, we've always done that. So if we have something special now, when the hiring kinda gets going, I'll put the others over covered. Um, I'll go through first, Tom Kaiser for the Bots IQ. Tom offered his class, and there's extra outside of the class and responsibilities. And talking to Marie and Samantha, and the best way we could've co-located to is Jerry and Pep. Or parades. Because Jerry, I mean, he does any practice for that during the year, or during the school day, but that's extra and above what's normally expected of a teacher. So, Tom, uh, with the Bots IQ, he would be compensated the same as Jerry, uh, and what that would be, and how that would look. Um, and then that would just be part of the extra duty. So that's Tom, and he's done a good job, and he seems very happy with that. He didn't make anything last year, so going through that. The next one is, um, Kelsey McCarthy. Uh, Kelsey is, uh, instruction lady over at FLC, uh, played when she was in high school, and is pretty excited to take over to seven grade volleyball. Uh, and then next, Jose Chavez, many of you do know Jose, so pretty excited to interview. Um, and, uh, and Ramsey, and Mike, and Samantha, uh, you know, recommending that Jose will be our assistant girls soccer coach. So, um, that, and he graduated, what was that, two thousand and Jake, that year?
And he's also done several hours with Stacy Bee Hill in Spanish, and really done a really nice job with her, and so I think we've seen a huge amount of maturity and growth from him, and, and he's, we have great references for him, so.
Uh, no middle school track yet, and then for boys assistant soccer coach for next fall, a gentleman by the name of George Sukup, or Sukup, uh, he's at UW Oshkosh, he's a degree in physical education with a coaching minor. He played at Finalak for four years, and also was in track for four years. The reason we don't have middle school track right now, this is fall, Mike's talked to him, we could have a, a two-for-one. Um, he's being hired for, uh, recommend be hired for the assistant soccer coach job. He also is, uh, to, he's also involved with the McCarthy family, so he knows some of the family here too. Yes. We don't have any right now. Yep, and then Steve Gross, uh, nice guy, just met him today, he is a sister. He's doing, he's doing teaching with Bass Radio right now, at, uh, middle school, and then he'll be going to Friendship for the last night. He's very nice, articulate, you know, came in, he didn't know me from anybody, so he did a very, from what I noticed. Also, Mike thought that he did a very good job, and, uh, Kim, so looking at our JV softball coach. He's, uh, working on his degree. He, uh, is a head girls RC basketball coach at Home Field, uh, he is right now, so that gives him a little bit understanding about, uh, sports. And, uh, pretty excited to have Stephen help us out. Yeah, she's the assistant Marcy.
Okay, did I know that you're the JV?
This was back, it was Bruce Nyberg, after Bruce Nyberg, it was a lady from Marion University, and...
Oh, that is, yes.
Motion number two, hot.
Second.
Second. Discussion, roll call.
Yes, Keela?
Yes.
Yes. Item six, discussion, consideration of the high school hand for the course book?
Questions, questions?
And what, Samantha had forwarded you a shared document that had, there's very few changes in it, um, but if you would, Samantha, if you go through what those changes are.
Sure, few, but big and exciting.
Yes.
So just to, to share with you, um, we did, at, kinda at the request of the counselors, um, Erin had alphabetized it for us, just by department, to make it a little bit easier to find things. Um, secondly, the business department is, is pretty revamped, so they took a look at, um, Kurt and Doug, at their course descriptions, and for example, we previously had offered Microsoft Word, Microsoft Excel, and Microsoft PowerPoint, and had those classes articulated. And we struggled the past couple of years with those running for kids to say, "Do I really wanna take a whole semester of, of Word or PowerPoint?" And Kurt's background is more of, uh, the computer essentials, in kind of giving everybody the basics in, in computer essentials one, and then really refining those skills in two. And so we're changing that, it's still able to be articulated with the tech. So, I think that's a much better model, and there's several new courses, um, in the business department. Adding two Project Lead the Way courses, Dixie Jerko is excited to attend Project Lead the Way training this summer for the Principles of Engineering class. Um, so we have two in the engineering department. And then Doug Forsyth is also excited to attend, and again, this is, you know, based on if we have the, the right numbers, uh, the computer science project Lead the Way, so we'd be able to add both of those. Um, still in, in business, um, Kurt Wismer, yeah, finished his thesis Friday, Saturday, one of those two days, and a class that will be certified to teach CAP next year, so we've added CAP into our business department. I know, you'll see in the book that the one unknown for us is, um, CAP, what it will be as far as cost. Um, so we're waiting to hear on that, but excited to add that in business department.
One thing with that, just to, this year, we didn't pay any, because of the change, which was great. It actually worked out pretty well. Uh, but prior to that, uh, we had paid the whole thing about five years ago, and then we changed to go half and half. And our recommendation is that if there is a cost, that we go back to the half and half, instead of the district paying the whole thing, because the students are still getting that college credit from UW Oshkosh. So, I mean, they can take the class and not pay for the credit, still get the class, but they won't get the credit. So, it does, it's not like it's exclusive, but if they want that credit, it's still extremely reasonable for that cost.
Wasn't there a change though, at state level, or were we...
That could go away.
Just for this year.
Just for this year. This, that could go away quickly. That's the way course options, this course options was this new thing that came out, and it kind of fed off of that. I'm hoping it continues to go that way, because it was a really positive thing that came off of it, but it's not something.
Wow, yeah, I, everything, at least the CAP teachers keep hearing is, it's not going to be free next year, but out of our hands.
But it's a heck of a deal, and I'd recommend that the district still pays half.
And the, and the way CAP works is, it's still only half of what the course cost is, and then that half of that cost goes to the district, and then that's where we are paying half of that cost, and the parent paying half. So it's really us paying a quarter, parent paying a quarter, and the, you know, university kind of picks up the rest to begin with.
And we would definitely, if there's ever a thing with money or anything, work out a payment plan, so that definitely...
Yeah, and we do that, we do that. Um, number five, um, trying something different, really in the next couple of years, the high school really would like to kind of, you know, change the way that our, our schedule is, um, and be a lot more flexible. So one of the things with the cafe and food service, um, Jill right now has a fifth hour class, and wants to continue that, to have that lunch option, but really wants to have those kids in the after-school program. So she is offering a class, um, it's the same food service class, but it's an option to take that class after school, like a ninth hour class, for credit. Um, and she's doing a great job at really working with not only her department, but also with, um, tech ed, and with business, to kind of incorporate those employability skills, so those kids can get those DPI certificates. Um, math, um, unfortunately, MPDC decided this year, for whatever reason, the dean had said that they are no longer agreeing to articulate our college mathematics. So all of us, um, around the area here who change to college math, um, thinks it's a, a really good transition for kids who are looking to go into the technical college. Unfortunately, uh, we've been told that more than likely, it's not gonna be articulated. Number seven, summer, which I included this, even though this isn't really course description, I just wanted you guys to be aware of it. Um, really excited, Town Mothie is gonna be offering a section of US history, um, for incoming freshmen. Um, again, looking at trying to be flexible for kids. Um, I, I challenge all the staff members to think about that, so that, you know, kids can get their US history taken care of, for example, in summer, not to take it, be more open, you know, especially for those kids who are taking band, choir, Spanish, all the above. This just gives them a, a chance, typically our freshmen, sophomores have very, very little wiggle room. So trying to, trying to open that up. Um, and then along with that, both Dixie Jerko and Katie Crabbe have proposed an upper level, uh, junior, senior, half-credit English and half-credit science, in case the kids are interested, and, and it could be used for, you know, even a credit recovery, or it could be used for those kids that are really interested in science, that it's, Dixie's is a CSI-type forensic science class, um, that it could be, hey, I can, once again, free up a little bit of my schedule. Um, and then, number eight, we're just continuing to look at ways, just disappointed that kids are not taking classes for AP credit. Um, so for example, Kelly Mower, uh, and I spoke, and, um, part of what we're gonna see is, we're still advertising the, um, AP US history for seniors, but if they don't sign up to take it, we're gonna go back and say, "Okay, juniors, what do you think? Would you prefer to take an EP US history, or AP government, excuse me, um, rather than government, and, and trade it that way?" So, um, just trying to be flexible to tell kids out that way, so.
And just one final thing, we were talking about time change and things like that, and it's something, at times, we might be moving, asking to move to high school to a later start, so that we can do a zero hour, and maybe give some more flexibility like that too, so. I don't know if that's gonna come to fruition right now, I highly doubt it. We have so many other things going on, but we could maybe even do a six-thirty this year, if we would, we'll talk, which probably won't happen.
We would like it if we, the zero hour, you know, Finalak High School does a zero hour, and it starts at seven. It's manageable, because of, you know, their day. Um, hours with us starting at seven-thirty, a, a zero hour is tough, you know, to say the least, for kids, so.
I would say...
Would like to encourage us to talk about it in the future.
So we, so by December, November, December of next year, once we do some of these changes, look at these other ways to add courses, like I love that ninth hour afterwards, I, I might very well, with research and dad and Johnson bus, say, "Hey, what do you think about starting middle school and high school at seven-fifty-five? If we can still keep the elementary at like eight, or at eight-thirty," so, there might be a couple of things.
That would be something probably in a community conversation, too, because of the work schedules and parents and...
And that's what's so great about this CLC, this, this learning community, this for the elementary. This is gonna take a huge part, if we can get this, and staff that, so it'll be pretty cool.
I have a question with AP courses, do they have an option of taking the AP exam, or do they do that automatically?
They're an option.
Okay, and then, but they have to pass at a certain level to get the credit.
They do, they do. And, and that's why, you know, the good and bad, I mean, I think CAP classes, kids feel like they have a little bit more control, because it's not taking a, a test. Um, but at the same time, and we try to continue to offer, you have to be very specific as far as, um, the teachers who teach that class have to have a master's in that specific area, in order to teach it. So, um, other people who have a master's in technology, or, or other, they, they're not eligible to teach it. So, you know, the AP offers a different option, but, um, so far, like I said, we've just struggled to get kids to take it, to go that test route.
Yeah, well, in the CAPs, if they pass, they get the credit.
UW Oshkosh credit, which is different, because even with AP, you know, as an AP teacher at Finalak, it's a one through five, and they, they mark at three, four, or five, you could normally get credit. Well, if you're going to UW Madison, you get a three on a test, they might not give you the credit for it, you know? And even if you're going to some other, so it, there's, it's always up to what that school's gonna do.
But there's still huge, huge benefits to AP and having those, I mean, there's, there's many schools that have a ton of offerings, and so I still would like to give, you know, give the best of both worlds, give CAP, uh, because some kids don't meet that, that GPA requirement for CAP, but they still in one specific area would do really well, you know, to pass that test.
And it's great, you could help set them up for college, so much better to do on present.
How does our, how do we do with the kids who take the test?
We have not been successful in kids, um, taking AP. Um, they're not signing up for it, so AP classes not run the past couple of years. Um, the teachers, Kelly Mower, um, Amy Cole, uh, Kim Orlebach, have all been through the AP Institute training, and we've tried to offer, and we just haven't had kids sign up for it. So that's why my conversation, yeah, we haven't been running them, because they're not signing up. So, that's why, you know, I, I came to Kelly and said, you know, maybe if the kids don't wanna take government, and then, as a senior, take it. So, you know, she's like, "Okay, I still believe in that, let's try it," but if not, then she's kind of willing to say, "Okay, then let's open up to juniors," to say, "Which would you prefer, the AP government or regular government?" You know, and, and see if those kids, again, um, they don't wanna be challenged by that.
I agree. My other comment is, that Ridge before is absolutely blown away by the conference, because it wasn't too far in the past, and we were pretty, you know, just to say, you know, the stuff that was required, and then maybe a couple of lectos, and, I mean, good stuff, but the options that we have here, hopefully we can run most of those classes, like, there's really, really neat stuff, extra stuff. I used to hear that criticism about Finalak and wherever else, and all these AP stuff are all these extra, you know, from my, I, I should be student, but we don't do any... achieving student, but we don't do any of that. And so, this, this is great. And then even a variety, not necessarily the higher-level class, just a variety for everything. And so I think with arrival, they're better, any of the schedules I've seen recently, places I've been. So, it's very.
And that's one of the reasons why, when we look at our budgets, we're always really tight, because we will, the board and the community has said, we want offerings for kids, and that costs money. And that's how we'll keep advocating.
Well, what we've done with just staff morale, if you want to call it that, along these, we can step, step forward and say, I want this, I want to try that. That's, that's great. Amen. It's a great place to be here.
Oh, could I be forward? If there's any, just like some titles and things like that, we're still kind of flushing out some things. So, your product right there, just with understanding of the motion, that there, there's, there might be like page numbers difference, some different things there, but the integrity of the book will stay the same, but that just be something.
Understand.
Thank you. Okay. Eliot?
Yes.
Yes.
Ah, yes.